For the audience, viewers can access five board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/board. Board meetings may be on demand in this address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. Julie, do you have any public comments?
We do now.
All right, we will move on to our audit firm and I will defer to Christine.
Good morning. So we have Manor Casterson is here this week for some field work. And we have Dave Nelson here to kind of just talk to the board about the audit process, how it's going so far and see if you guys have any questions or concerns.
Good morning. Thanks for having us here as your auditors this year. It feels like it was about six months ago or so that I stood in front of you last November in the other boardroom. It's a little different location today, but glad to be here, happy to be here. So thanks for having me.
I'm going to audit the June 30, 2024 financial statements, which includes the full ACFOR report as well as the uniform guidance reports. So you're well aware, but Traverse City Public Schools spends more than 750,000 in federal funds, which requires the single audit or a federal compliance audit, if you want to call it that. So we are in the process of that. We did the majority of that testing during our prelim visit back in June. So when we come out in June, I'll give you a little background behind the process here. Starts back in probably March or so with scheduling. We come out in June, we do our preliminary field work. What we're doing during that timeframe is really two things. Primarily, it's our risk assessment, some of our testing in response to one of the risks I'll talk about in a second. And then we do a lot of our single audit testing or our federal compliance audit testing during that time period. So we're really trying to evaluate where the risks are, what are the internal controls? And then let's look at the single audit and federal program to make sure that the key controls are functioning there as well. So I mentioned risks a second ago. There are two risks that are present in every audit. They're not unique to Traverse City. They are present in every audit that I do, whether it's a school district or not. They are management override of controls and improper revenue recognition. So in response to management override of controls, we do a few different tests. And again, it's not that we believe that management is overriding controls here. It's really because we're required to respond to that risk, we're looking for indications of it. So we design a few different tests to look for that. One is we get a copy of the check register. We look for gaps in the check sequence that could indicate a missing check. Nine times out of 10, it's a void check. But we do that. We look at payments to key employees to make sure that those are for a valid business purpose, that they're reviewed, approved, and supported. We look at the top vendors in the check register from year to year. So are there any new vendors this year? Who are they? Why are we using them? Are they reasonable? Or are any vendors that may have been on last year, but they're not on this year? So kind of both ways. We get a copy of the journal entries posted during the year. We're required to test those. So we'll pick a sample of adjusting journal entries that are posted in the general ledger during the year. Again, we're looking to see, are they made for a valid business purpose? Are they reviewed, approved, and supported? A couple of the other tests we do, we look at electronic payments. Electronic payments are becoming more and more prevalent, but those really should follow the same controls as a normal disbursement process, right? A normal AP check. So we want to look at electronic payments and make sure that those are being accounted for properly, that they're reviewed, approved, and supported. You'll hear that a few times, that phrase. We look at key employee payroll. Obviously, the key employees are the ones that could override controls. So we want to make sure that their payroll is being calculated and paid properly. And then we also do test the purchase cards. So that's a pretty big area for TCAPS. A lot of purchase cards are used throughout the district. So we want to make sure that we pick a sample from a couple of months during the year. So it's not just one timeframe. But then we'll pick a sample of those items, look at supporting documentation. Are they for a valid business purpose? Are they reviewed, approved, and supported? So common theme here. So that's how we respond to the risk of management override of controls. So far, I'm happy to report, I have nothing of significance to report to you today. So that's a good thing. The other risk is improper revenue recognition. So in response to that, we confirm, so if we have a significant risk, we have to do additional procedures beyond the basic level, right? So in response to that, we confirm state aid revenue, federal revenue, property tax revenue. That's got to be 90 to 95% of the total revenue, roughly. So in response to that risk, we confirm the majority of the revenue that's recognized by the district during the year. So I mentioned internal control briefly. During our preliminary visit, we're also evaluating internal controls. So there are four significant transaction classes that are present in the financial statements. One being the bank reconciliation slash close process, two being cash receipts and revenue, three being cash disbursements and expenses, four payroll, arguably the biggest, right? So those four transaction classes are what really drive the financial statement. So we want to look and see, do we have key controls that are in place? Are they designed properly? And are they implemented and operating effectively? So during our preliminary visit, we did walkthroughs over those four significant transaction classes. Again, I don't have anything significant to report in this meeting, so that's a good thing. That means the key controls that are in place are operating effectively and properly designed. So that's good. A couple of other items here, materiality. We utilize materiality during the audit, so we're not looking at every transaction. We'd be here for a couple of months if we did. I think that would take a little bit too long, maybe not be efficient, right, to support the opinion that we're going to express in November. So we utilize materiality. And so just to give you a rough idea, let's say materiality is 200,000 for the general fund, and I'm looking at an accounts payable listing for the general fund. Everything over 200,000 I would look at supporting documentation for. I would also pick a sample of items below that materiality threshold to make sure that those items are properly recorded as well. So that gives you kind of an idea of how we utilize materiality throughout the audit process. I mentioned that it is going to include the ACFOR again this year. So we'll be working with Julie over there and the team to gather all of that data. Certainly look forward to that. As a reminder, the audit is still due November 1, so that hasn't changed with the state. We'll meet that deadline, certainly. I mentioned it briefly, but prelim did go very well in June. I appreciate all the help. I wasn't out myself, but the team was here. So we do ask for a lot at that point in the audit. We're asking for a lot of information right now. So I appreciate the team's help over there. You guys always do a great job and we appreciate it. It makes our lives a little bit easier as well. So thank you. Couple of items in the accounting world. So GASB 100 is the new accounting standard this year. The joke last year was, hey, we're going to make it to 100, and now we finally made it to 100. Yeah, not a real great joke, but GASB 100 is...
In the accounting world.
Yeah. No one didn't really hit. GASB 100, it's not going to have a significant impact on TCAPS. What it does do is if there is a prior period adjustment that's recorded, there's some additional reporting that goes into the footnotes to the financial statements. I don't expect a prior period adjustment to be recorded during this year's audit. So that shouldn't have an impact from the standard standpoint. The other item where it could have an impact, although I don't think it will, is if you have a major fund that becomes non-major or a non-major fund that becomes major, you have to add a disclosure to the footnotes describing to the reader why that change occurred. So it's a change in classification. So it just gives more information to the reader to tell them why. If the reader understands the difference between major and non-major funds, that's helpful too. But that is a part of that new standard. So a couple of other items on my list here, and then I'll let you get back to the meeting. Capital projects, it's a big deal. We test the capital projects expenditures in accordance with Section 13501A of the Revised School Code. So we test a very high percentage of the capital expenditures that are made during the year to make sure that they're in accordance with 13501A, they're in accordance with the approved bond language. That's really important. So we have nothing to report there. We do a lot of that testing during prelim as well, and then we update it when we come back this week. So nothing to report there either. So that's also a good thing. Understand the sale of the administration building, hence we're here. So that happened during the year. So we will look at supporting documentation for that as well, although I did see it in the minutes. And then birth of loss, sounds like that one is in progress. So we'll keep tabs on that. Budgeted draw from fund balance, currently adding to fund balance, it's about the normal variance that we would expect. All I mentioned there is the budgeted fund balance, the budget to actual page in the financial statements is probably the most important page in that packet. So we utilize directional auditing. So we look at the budget that's been published. We look at the actual numbers that we're auditing. We want to know why there's a difference there. And then we also keep that in mind as we go through the audit process. If we're saying we're coming in at X and we came in at Y and there's a significant variance, well, there's any adjustments posted after we've started the audit? Are they posted because we're trying to get closer to the budget, or are they posted for a valid reason? So we keep that in mind from a directional auditing standpoint that helps to guide us. So wanted to give you a little bit of background on that process as well. I'll open it up for any questions, if there are any.
I have just a couple of quick ones. On the UG audit side, did you select your major programs yet?
Yeah, it's the child nutrition cluster. Yep.
And then have you determined if the district is a low-risk or high-risk auditee?
Low-risk auditee. Yep, thanks. That's a good question. Another thing I'll second with that is we're not testing ESSER this year. The uniform guidance had stated that program as a higher-risk program for the first few years it was out. They changed that designation this year. It's no longer higher risk. We've tested it three years in a row here. We didn't have any findings. So based on our risk assessment, we considered that program to be low risk. So we're going to test the child nutrition cluster, and so far, that's gone well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just really quickly, since I am not a CPA, I am just curious, with all the federal funds that come through, is there a consistent set of standards that CPAs use across the country? Like, do you have an association that helps you interpret them? So it's consistent across the country?
Yeah, great question. So we follow a couple of different sets of standards. Excuse me. The AICPA puts out their professional standards. The GASB, or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they put theirs out. So we follow both of those for your audit. We also have the uniform guidance. So that's specifically related to the federal awards. But they produce procedures as well that we follow.
No questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm just subbed, though.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thank you for having me this morning. We'll be right across the hall. If you have any questions, you think about them after the meeting. That happens a lot. They have my contact information. Feel free to reach out. So thanks a lot.
All right. We will move on to the approval of the draft committee meeting minutes from the prior meeting. Any changes to the posted meeting minutes?
I just have one question because at the very end, at the time we held our June meeting, we had expected, I think, to hold our next meeting at the end of June, but that in fact, or end of July, what was it? End of June, excuse me. So on, looking at our dates, May 30th, our last finance meeting, we had expected to hold our next meeting, June 27th. That didn't happen, got canceled, and so this is our next meeting. So I just wondered, at the very bottom of the minutes, do we need to update that to reflect today's date?
Well, I think my opinion, and I don't know the rules as it relates to Open Meetings Act, because we actually stated that during the meeting, it's reflected in the minutes and then it was canceled after the fact. But I can certainly...
That was my question.
But I can ask Stacy what OMA would say.
Okay. Yep, that was my only question.
I think maybe pending that clarification, the bulk of the minutes, we're good.
Oh, for sure.
So we'll leave them pending that. We'll even present it or post it as presented.
Sounds good.
All right. Moving on to the next item, bids, services, and purchases. The first item is under curriculum for AP Psychology, and I will defer to Heidi Maltby Skodek.
Yes, so we are bringing a request for an additional 80 copies for St. Francis for an AP Psychology purchase. And we actually, in the memo, if you look at the memo, we actually brought both to you because we had a renewal for 120 copies for Central and West originally that was under the threshold to bring to board curriculum. So when we added an additional 80 copies for a shared time school, that brought us above the threshold. So in the memo, we actually stated both the first and the second purchases. We, again, a lot of questions usually come around St. Francis. We have shared time teachers that actually work under TCAPS that teach over there. And whatever we support within Central West TCAPS, we also support at St. Francis if they are a shared time teacher. So this was an additional request. The teacher had gone to AP training this summer, and in accordance with really all the AP rules, we need to update the books at St. Francis as well.
Do we have one or two AP Psychology certified teachers in our district?
We have, well, if you include shared time, three.
Okay.
Yes.
My only question on this, and this is just to educate me, so when we, is the reason that TCAPS pays for the acquisition of curriculum materials for St. Francis out of the per pupil foundation allowance that we get for those shared times?
Correct. Yes, we receive foundation allowance for any classes that are taught by TCAPS teachers over at shared time schools. And there's quite a few typically elective classes. So they would be AP classes, art, music, those types of courses.
So does all of that revenue go into curriculum and instruction budget specifically?
I'm not, it's separate, but...
It comes in just like a regular student. We would take that foundation into, just as we do everything else, to pay everything from that standpoint. We just get a prorated amount for that. The other piece to make sure it's understood with shared time, we're not allowed by law to do core classes, only electives, AP, and career and tech ed is what we're allowed under state law to be able to provide under a shared time program.
So if you didn't have enough kids interested in that within TCAPS to do it as an elective, then obviously you wouldn't be offering it, even though you had a lot of interest. So the driving force remains TCAPS.
Correct. But with our size, normally we do offer all of those. That's the beauty. And so when we have, you know, something that we do that they may have the numbers to want to do, we're able to do so.
They could put little support signs out in their yards.
Can't, we can't talk about supports or any of those things right now.
Just in terms of AP Psychology.
Heidi, is the request for the full $44,333?
Yes, correct. Yeah. The clarification is they're only going to be purchasing 16 after you approve it. But the clarification is we're asking you to approve the 44 because if we had bought it all together, it would be above the threshold.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'm good to move this to the full board committee, full board, under consent agenda. All right. The next item is under technology, and it's camera, storage, and servers. Mr. Rebemovich.
Good morning. Yes, so today bringing to you what's our planned kind of evaluation and replacement of some of our infrastructure. In this case, it's our storage servers for our camera system. After some evaluation, we took a hard look at the Synology Storage System, which we actually use in other capacities for some backups. We've been really pleased with them. So excited to kind of bring that on as also the camera storage option. Taking a look, the system that we're hoping to get will allow for expansion. This is kind of the problem we currently have with our existing is we're adding more cameras often in the district. We're just under 1,000, I believe. Put a lot of data throughput through, and we want to be able to maintain that 30-day retention period for the storage. This system will allow us to do that with our existing and then has the capability for expansion without the necessity to purchase an entirely new server system. So we can kind of just add the storage as we need. That cost would be $234,657, which includes a 10% contingency in case we needed any additional kind of equipment or configuration needs. But we're planning on installing and configuring this mostly in-house. So it should be a rather simple process once we get the product on site. Any questions? Evan, you're always inexpensive. I knew you were going to say that. That's why I wear my nicest coat when I come here.
He means that with all due respect.
Yes, IT is always expensive.
Was, was, I was trying to look it up real quick, when there was like a lift gate charge on it?
Are they delivering it on pallet?
If they end up having to deliver it on a pallet, the company does charge a lift gate because we do not have a dock.
A loading dock. So it just depends on where we can get it delivered and what, as Wendy said, kind of what state it's in. If it comes on a pallet and they use a truck with a lift gate, that's just kind of a standard charge they add to that.
But if we don't end up using the lift gate, they will not charge that. But it's there in case we end up, it ends up needing it.
What's the structure at the back of Saban? I thought that was...
That was a loading dock.
No, it's just a, yeah, we have a, we built a canopy for dropping off product, but it's, we don't have any kind of elevation or dock or anything there.
All right. I just had a question about, you know, incorporating scalability to accommodate future expansion needs. Are you thinking, does that refer to building expansions? Or are you just thinking numbers of security cameras around the district?
It's just any number of cameras. And if we look at, you know, what the eventual kind of camera replacement cycle is, that usually involves a higher quality image, which then involves a larger storage need. So kind of both those senses it can be if we add for some reason the building, but just cameras, we're always, and with Patrick, we're evaluating camera locations all the time and where they need to be and what maybe additional cameras we might need to add.
All right. I also had a question about the expected lifespan of the storage system and maybe as a guide, you know, how much did the existing, the current system cost and last?
So we last purchased this in 2020. It was cameras and some accompanying servers to run those systems. Totaled, we lifted up approximately $350,000 and did not have the ease of expandability that this new Synology system has, which is why we're excited to move towards that option. So we don't have to go a full replacement. We will reevaluate that as a lot of our tech equipment, especially infrastructure, pretty much every, on the four-year scale, just because it tends to be that replacement updates, what new technology has come out, depending on our needs. But doesn't mean we necessarily will have to do then a replacement at every four years, especially now. Like I said, we might just have to consider expansion, which would be a far less cost adding additional storage in there.
So since that was only four years ago, is there any way that we can... Any of that cost from the original, the equipment we have in place now?
We're still going to use the equipment we have. So...
The storage system, I think.
Yeah, we still are going to use those. Those aren't going to be, those are repurposed. We use those for various student share storage, staff storage, all of our kind of internal server systems. Those can all be repurposed.
What all goes into your storage?
I'm sorry?
What all goes into your storage? And how long do you store things? Is it like old meetings and things like that?
So anything we want to store onsite, not cloud-based, is what we have to purchase and maintain equipment for. In the case of the cameras, that's basically all the video recordings. If we didn't have, or, you know, set up the storage system, you would literally just be able to view only the cameras. And then once that time has passed, you wouldn't be able to go back and re-watch those recordings. So for the cameras especially, we do a 30-day retention policy for all cameras. So it holds it for 30 days. And then it's kind of built in. It doesn't mean necessarily right at 30 days, everything gets removed. But as it starts to rebuild, build on that storage as more data is recorded, it just starts to phase out at that 30-day mark at various sites, depending on how much throughput they're gathering, like what they're recording. And then, and when we talk about like the staff shares and the folders, those are places that the staff and students can store any of their files if they're working on, trying to think of it. So like our CAD programs, any of those that have non-cloud-based file storage, they can store those onsite, and that's what we maintain. And for our staff, they all have their own staff folder that they can save documents and just pretty much anything computer-based that they might need to save onsite for us. That's TCAPS-related.
And are the cameras on as security cameras 24 hours, 24/7?
Correct.
So you've got a lot of storage of the night.
Yes. Yep. They can get a lot of data, like I said, as they become better resolution, which is great for us to be able to view them and see a lot. But it also increases that storage need.
Hopefully just wildlife in the night, right?
Yeah, we don't mind those.
So I do have a potentially sensitive question, but we hear a lot from students about vaping in bathrooms. And, you know, I'm just wondering, I know we can't have cameras inside bathrooms for privacy reasons, but do we have cameras at this point outside of every bathroom to see who's going in and out so that if there are allegations and investigations, you've got that?
Right. So we pair the vape sensors, which are currently at Central High School. We did a one-year trial run at Central High School, and it actually went very, very well. So well that right now, there's work orders in, and we're moving forward with West Senior High. They'll also get them starting this year. So to answer your camera question, yes. We have cameras pointed at the bathrooms. So we pair the alerts going off with who's coming in and out of the bathroom at that point. And then we start investigations from there. It's, the vape sensors work in a way, is one of the things I was going to talk about, but they work in a way that it's not typically automatic. Like, it's going off, go to the bathroom, there's somebody in there. There's a chunk of time. So we take that, and like Evan was saying, we have that retention period. We go back, we look at that time, and we see who is going in and out at that time.
And that's district-wide, K through 12 for all the bathrooms? Or just?
No, just right now, Central High School.
Okay.
And then it'll be at West Senior High starting this year.
Okay. And then how about middle schools? What's the plan?
Not in the middle schools yet, no. And it's not in all of the bathrooms at the schools. That would just be overload, for lack of better terms, for the staff to dedicate the time. So it's in between five and seven bathrooms that the staff, security staff, administrative staff know they have issues in those specific bathrooms. And so that's where they're going.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I hope we have a plan down the road for expansion in middle school, as I do hear about it there as well.
Oh, yes.
Sadly.
The problem, you know, is obviously what goes on in there, you know, in that aspect. And one of the things we are working on is, as we do new construction, looking at more single stalls that, you know, it's just one person, one entry. And even looking, we're working on a project right now, looking at West High School of taking one of the larger bathrooms and maybe break those up into single stall. Something that students and our student advisory, when we, you know, council met, they really are saying we would really like more private, single-stall bathrooms in that element. So it's one project where Christine's actually working on right now with Paul on looking at, at West Senior High School, one of the large restroom areas of actually breaking both the men's and women's up and having a series of single stalls so that there's more privacy. But also, it's all wide open until you don't have this area that's, you know, not be able... So that there's more privacy, but also it's all wide open and so you don't have this area that's on, you know, not be able to be seen. You have cameras right there that literally will see one person going in, one person out of every single stall.
There's no gathering, unsupervised gathering area.
Right, and so that's something that we are working on and trying to put something together. West is kind of our first, but as you will be able to see the new construction, which I don't know if you have pictures, maybe, um, of the, uh, innovation and manufacturing center at Central. There's nine?
Single cell.
Nine single stall that is built onto that now, um, of that. So as we look at construction and remodeling things, this is something we're gonna continue, right to the reason you're saying. So even better if you have a camera that sees only one person able to go in. And quite honestly, if more than one go into a single stall, there's nothing good, you know, that in that process of vaping or whatever that somebody's trying to do without a camera seeing. That a principal can address right away.
Yeah. And would those expansions of cameras down the road, would that be eligible for bond funding?
Oh, yes, we always purchase cameras with.
Okay, and I don't remember, is that a priority need that we identified and with this?
It's actually built into the annual allocation for technology, which we have increased for the new bond allocation, just based on the need and the cost of materials.
Okay, great. Thank you, wanna make sure everybody's comfortable going to the bathroom during the course of the school day.
All right, any other questions? I'm, I'm comfortable with this going to the full board under consent agenda, but.
Likewise.
Okay. So we will do that, move on to our next agenda item, which is furniture fixtures and equipment for the Innovation and Manufacturing Centers. And I will defer to Paul.
And you said it right there, that's what this request is for, is for furnishings for the new Innovation and Manufacturing Centers. The list of equipment that's listed on the, behind the pages there, behind this, um, the memo, are, uh, the detailed sheets that we got through, um, Deacon Mahaman. Who did all the digging and research and pricing for us. Of course, we reviewed it all with Heidi and, and staff to make sure that it was appropriate for their needs there. We are using some of our own, uh, stores of furniture for the, the IMCs as well, like the chairs that you see sitting here. We've got a store of those that we're gonna be using, our standard, uh, secondary furniture systems and that built into part of it. So the breakdown on here, there's three providers, uh, that priced out, uh, individual pieces of equipment for us. And we've got those listed there. Total for that was the two seventy-eight, nine oh five. There were a few items that we can't get through a purchasing consortium. There's some rack shelving and locking storage cabinets, uh, that we need to purchase, so those are listed separately. We did add a ten percent contingency on this, just to cover unforeseen needs. Which total for the F and E, FFNE is, uh, two eighty-four, six fourteen eighty-two. We also added a line item at the bottom, uh, asking for additional, uh, project contingency to bring us up to our, um, total budget for the project. We had, uh, remind me, twelve point one?
Twelve point one.
Twelve, twelve point one million, uh, budgeted for this project, all, all in, includes AE fees, CM fees, everything. Uh, and this will bring us up to that, uh, twelve point one number on that. So we don't want to have to come back later on here, uh, in case we run into a, another need or, or reason we'd like to ask for that contingency increase now.
And, and part of that is a cushion because we have used quite a bit of contingency so far, um, due to several different issues. A lot of unknowns have occurred specifically at Central High School, as you can imagine with an older building. And so we have used quite a bit of contingency. So this was just to give us, not sure we're gonna need it, but a little extra cushion given the total project bu- budget. So that if other things come up while we continue to complete the construction, we're able to do so.
Yeah, I, I hope we're mo- we're past most of that. A lot of it at Central High was some undocumented, um, water and sewer lines that were on the site. And then some structural issues, we ran into the, um, the, the building wasn't actually built the way the drawings said they were, said it was, so.
How old were those drawings?
Nineteen fifty-eight or so, you know, so. So anyway, we did, we did burn through some contingency at the beginning of the project, uh, addressing those issues, so. Uh, the total we're asking on this, um, memo is for four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three twenty-four sixty-two.
I have a couple, just one quick question. So the, the, on the furniture fixtures and equipment side of things, um, this was in the original twelve point one million dollar budget? And how, how on the budget side compared to the actual quotes that we've got here, do they compare?
Actually, both on technology and furniture fixtures and equipment were under budget, which is why I'm asking for the one eighteen just to go to the contingency. So that wouldn't have been available had they not been under budget on those items.
I just had a question, um, about input from students, staff and robotics. Are these, you know, I, I personally can't judge whether this is the best furniture, but I hope that we got input from the, the students and staff and mentors that will be using it.
Right.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm trying to think of the date, I can't recall the date, but we had an open forum again, once this was completed. They had questions on equipment and in that presentation, I showed them the furniture that was going to be used. So, um, they weren't as concerned with the furniture, they're more concerned with, um, is the equipment list matching what we had specified in the beginning? And so, um, we answered all their questions, I mean, I don't think they came back with any additional questions, so they seemed pretty happy.
No, and the, both principals have been through the drawings and the, and the equipment lists or the furniture lists and that, so.
Yeah, are, are they any, I mean, is the furniture any different from a non-stem?
There are some specialized pieces of furniture in here for.
Yeah, so there's some from green manufacturing that actually, uh, everyone seemed to be thrilled about because they're more like, um, tool chest. So there's not only storage, but there's availability to place tools. So there's some flat file pullouts and they're heavy duty metal, everything, almost everything in the innovation, um, labs and in clean labs are on wheels. And even the CAD lab, the CAD lab, um, tables are on wheels as well. The other thing we talked about in the design process was really about, um, making sure we have flexibility between spaces. So anything we specified as far as that heavy duty, um, equipment or furniture on wheels is the same color as Central as it is at West, this gray color. So flexibility for moving stuff from one place to the other and additional things like that, so.
Great.
It's kind of funny.
So I think the only other item that's gonna come forward to the board is equipment. And Heidi's been working on some quotes and some consortium pricing with Cindy, so that'll be the last item. And that was a specific budget and bond for stem equipment, so that'll be the last thing.
Like lab equipment?
Um, the, the CNC machines, the dust collection system, those things.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we, are, when are we expecting to see that come through, the next couple of months?
I would say next month or two, we're pretty close.
So it's ready for the opening? Okay. And my last question, and you kind of touched on this already, Paul, um, will the buildings be ready? Will these new stemwings be ready to accept the arrival in November?
Yes.
Even if every, every last coat of paint is not on, right? Doesn't have to be completely.
We're looking to be weathered in, uh, the end of this month.
Okay. Great, well, it's exciting to see us get down to these details.
Go ahead.
No, I'm just agreeing.
Okay. Just, uh, um, uh, agenda question, should these, do you want these as the same agenda item? Or do you want them separate, uh, since they're technically kind of two separate things? I would, I'm comfortable with both of them being on consent, uh, considering that the whole twelve point one million dollar project was already approved under, under a discussion way back.
So are you just saying that you think that the purchase of FFNE and then the contingency should be separate, but both under consent?
Exactly.
I'm good with that, if that's what you guys want to do, just for clarity's sake to, to do.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, but yeah, I'm ha- I'm, I'm good with them both being under consent.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and then when we do the board agenda in exec today, I'll have Stacy do that to, two separate items, other, Christine, if you can work with Stacy to get that.
Yeah, just in case somebody wants to pull one off or both or whatever. I don't think there's any issue. Okay. All right. We will move on then to our informational items. The first item is a food service update, defer to Christine.
Yes, so, um, we are fortunate to have, uh, Tom and Steve here from Food Service. Tom's the director and Steve is the manager. Um, there's been a lot of questions recently as it relates to, um, food service, how we operate, um, how we manage the federal funds, how, uh, we're able to do the free for all. But also related to menus and nutrition and waste of food. And, um, this is something they've presented quite a few years ago, so we thought we'd bring it back so that you can see, uh, there really is a plan for all of those questions. But that way you can ask questions and see what we have to offer. And I think, um, Steve's gonna highlight the, uh, interactive menus that we have that really help with students with allergies. So I'll let them get started and, uh, talk a little bit about what they do.
Good morning and thank you for allowing us to be here. We're always, uh, happy to talk about our operations and we're very proud of them. First off, uh, we, our total operating budget is, uh, seven point one two-five million. So there is a lot of money spent in food service and received in food service, so it's, we have a lot to look over. We have over ninety employees and I don't want to just brush over that because, uh, Steve and I are just coaches. Those are, those employees are the players out on the field and you have an all-star team of, uh, staff with our food service employees. They, um, do a wonderful job of offering, uh, delicious nutritious food every day and, uh, do great customer service. And we are just so proud of them, so I just wanted to make sure we give them the proper, um, recognition that they deserve. We provide services to TCAP's buildings and programs, um, all the North Ed buildings and their programs that are inside our buildings. And MCIA head start, which are in a couple of our buildings and also out at Chum's Corner. And we also do, uh, a la carte meals to Tri- Trinity Lutheran, they order from Montessori and pick up from Montessori. And last year, we served, uh, one point four million meals. So we were very busy with the free lunches last year and free, uh, breakfast, which everybody that's watching from home, it's free again this year. So come on in and join us for more meals. We, uh, did just recently, Michigan did just approve, uh, the local produce, uh, the ten cent meal program. We do offer local produce, I would say every single day somewhere in our district. Probably in most days, multiple buildings are offering, uh, Michigan local produce and we're very proud of that. That's something the board wanted us to do and we love to be able to take care of our local farmers and make sure that we share the wealth with them. The one thing about the ten cent program is it allows us to buy Michigan produce and local produce at half price. So that is a great program, um, so we are worried it had been taken out, but they did slip it back in there, so we will get another year of it. TCAPs currently uses, uh, these local farms and distributors, Warren Orchards, uh, which is out on the Old Mission Peninsula by Old Mission School. It surrounds Old Mission School out there. The My Farm Co-op, which is several farmers, uh, in Lillinaugh County. Gordon Food Service, who are getting very good at, uh, sourcing from Michigan and then sending us out, uh, all the information, not just produce, but also Michigan products. So that we are really gearing towards Michigan when we, uh, spend our money. Uh, Michigan Farm to Freezer, which is started here in Traverse City at Goodwill and then they moved down to Detroit. Now they're expanding to Grand Rapids, which will make us much easier. They do all kinds of, uh, frozen, uh, prepared fruits and vegetables. So that helps us go through the winter months when we don't have all the fresh produce available in Michigan. We can still get it from Michigan Farm to Freezer. And every year from Norco, Conch Farms, we, uh, get asparagus, fresh asparagus and have roasted asparagus in all our buildings every spring. Uh, Food Service Department spent approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand on local produce, uh, this past school year. So we are very proud of that and, uh, helping Michigan.
Steve, I had a question.
Yeah.
Just about the local produce being in at least one building per day. Is there a limitation, like we can't source more local produce to have it available at more buildings every day?
Well, we try to have it in more, more buildings, it's usually in more buildings, but I just say that to make sure, uh, cause sometimes we can have a farmer that doesn't get his delivery. And I, I run them around to keep the cost down on, uh, delivery costs so that we save a little more money. So if they bring all the, uh, apples to Easter and then I have to run around, so we may not be able to say it's gonna be on Monday. If that farmer gets it there on Tuesday for some reason, then I get it on a Wednesday. So we do our best to get as much local in Michigan in, but we, we don't want to go out and say, hey, and put it on the menu that says, we're gonna have it this day. And then find out the farmer had, his truck broke down or something and didn't get it to us or his help just quit or we all know that labor's not always guaranteed these days.
Is there a master schedule so that you can, you know, rotate where the produce?
We do our best to, uh, just, we're, we get from, like I said, now we got Gordon's doing much better, so, but we, I would say at least half our buildings probably have local produce almost every day. More apples, obviously more as we get into the winter months, uh, those are something that you can get easily in the winter months. The Farm to Freezer, we, uh, have often, which are your frozen blueberries, cherries, uh, sliced apples, sliced peaches. So they do a nice job of, uh, keeping us well stocked in local produce. And a lot of that is on your all-you-can-eat salad bars that are available every day at all our school buildings. We also added an all-you-can-eat hot vegetable bar at, um, our high schools, Central and West. And the reason for that is a lot of times they say our bigger kids are still hungry. We still have to stay inside the nutrition boundaries that the USDA sets up, but usually you can get away with more vegetables and fruits. So I added hot vegetables so that, to make sure the bigger kids are getting plenty of offerings as far as food and won't go away hungry. And then we also added a meatless meal option, uh, last year, we're gonna do it again this year, every day at every building. The children can find a meatless meal option, um, just for a little healthier option for all our children. Uh, TCAP's food service is working with Goodwill Food Rescue to, uh, reduce waste in our operations. What we do is we, uh, instead of having sharing tables, and the reason I don't have sharing tables is because I worry that if a child takes his food back to his, uh, table and he eats something with an allergen on it and then like grabs an apple and takes it up and puts it on a sharing table, that allergen's on that apple. And I don't want a child to have a reaction, not knowing that all of a sudden there was peanut butter on the apple that he didn't know that was there. So we just have a box that says Good, uh, Goodwill Food Rescue on it with a hole in it, they can drop everything in that box. And then, uh, we sort through it and give it to Foot, uh, Goodwill to hand out to our community and, uh, just reduced our waste in our operations. Another way we, um, try to help with the waste is, uh, reduce how much time the kids spend in line. We're constantly looking for ways to get kids through the line faster. Luckily with the free meals, now we don't have to use the POS system. They just have to slash off numbers as the kids come through, which makes it much faster in scanning ID cards. And, um, we know that there just isn't a way to add more time to the lunch period for the children because we have so much demands on our children educationally, that it's just not easy to say, okay, we'll put, give another ten minutes here or ten minutes there. It just doesn't work, plus we have busing to worry about and everything else. So we have to find a way to make sure they get more time to eat. So we do that by getting them through the lines as fast as we possibly can, so they have as much time to eat as they need. So we, they eat the food instead of throwing it all away. We have implemented a allergy labels, uh, behind the serving lines. This is what they look like, the, and what it is, is there's several different labels that they, all, all the different allergens. And that we put them up where the workers can actually see that label in, in front of the food that they're serving. So if that, that meal that's here says sesame, they know when the child comes up with a sesame allergy, that's one he can't have, give him the other meal. So we just, it's another last effort before the kids are served to remind them, not that meal, that one's got the sesame, give that child the other one. They know who the children are, but I just want to give them another reminder right as the kids are coming through that, wait, he can't have that one. So, I mean, here, you gotta eat this one. So, and they're very good about explaining it to the children. And we also use that by showing the, um, noon duties, because obviously, once the food leaves. by showing the noon duties, because obviously, once the food leaves the serving lines, we have no idea if Johnny's going to talk his friend into giving him a bite of that cheese pizza that he's got a dairy allergy for. So they need to know which kids have allergies too. So we, we don't encourage sharing, obviously, but we know kids are going to be kids. And I didn't get a pizza. Well, here, you can have some of mine. So we just want to make sure the noon duties are aware of that. And another, go back. Another thing we did with the nurses last year is we now print up all the children with allergies with their picture. That way, as they come through, we have another picture. We gave it to the noon duties. So they're, they know which kids have allergies. And if we have a sub in, they quickly can see the picture and know which child shouldn't have that food. So we try to layer our allergy protection. I mean, our, all our workers, like I said, are all-stars, and they all know which kids. But the more layers of protection we have, the better, because we just don't want to have a child have an allergy reaction. And this is where I'm going to let Steve take over, because he's going to, he's the guru of online menus.
So our online menu system, we utilize with our dieticians that we contract with currently. They make all of our menus for us based upon the nutritional requirements from USDA. So it has all of the allergens and essential data, letting parents and even building staff go through and take a look at what the menu is. They can also then have the ability, once we get in here. So the, the interface, the online menu system has the interface where they'll come choose which school their children go to. Then they're able to select which menu they want to take a look at, so they can take a look at the upcoming week, upcoming month, or the next day. And then once they get into the system, it's pretty comprehensive. You can see each day's got all of the entree items, vegetables, milk and condiments listed on that menu for the day. Each one of these items is actually actionable and links to the nutritional information for that individual menu item. So they can take a look at it and see where it's falling and make informed decisions. There's also built into this menu system, the ability to use the build a meal program. And this is very helpful in our buildings. I know one of them we use at Montessori is for children who may have diabetics that have to do insulin. They have to calculate the carbohydrates for that day for the meal. So you can actually go in and choose which items the child wants to eat for that day for lunch. So let's say if they wanted to do the cheese quesadilla with salsa, and of course, they're going to choose the fat-free milk, because it'll tell here. But they're going to throw a little sour cream on the side. If you look over here on the right, you can see now, we've got 470 total calories with 49 B in the carbs. So it also then breaks it down here, and you can see where the sugars are. So they're actually going to make an informed decision. Our staff goes even further than this, though, for certain students. And they'll contact me in the office, and we'll do an actual breakdown of the individual menu items, if they're a combination of food. If they're doing, say, if they would have chosen the, say, hamburger, they don't want the bun, we can give them carbohydrates just in the hamburger patty alone. So they can be very, very specific. So we're really working back and forth, trying to make sure we're giving everybody the information they need. But this is accessible, except to building staff and to parents. Another item you can utilize the online menu system for is the filter allergens. So since we have the allergens listed in all of our food items, if you're able to come in here and you want to filter the menu that day and see what your kids are going to be safe eating. So if you have young children in the elementary, and you want to say, well, choose this, not this, you're able to come in and say, well, let's go ahead and say, you've got a sesame allergy. We're going to go ahead and apply that to the menu. And you'll see that any items that are crossed out, those items contain sesame. So like the macaroni and cheese and the chicken tenders, there's sesame somewhere in the production of that. It may be a product that might be produced in a sesame facility or on a similar line, or maybe one of the actual ingredients. So they're able to take a look at that and get a little more information, so they can safely send the kids to school. You know, they don't have to worry about what they might be choosing to eat that day.
Was this a new feature then, added this past?
No, we've had it for, I think, four years now, four or five years.
Four years, okay. Really cool. And, and so obviously, for the proactive parent, they can look at this and tell their kid all they want. This is what you need to order. There's, but you're not pre-ordering the food. Like, it's still incumbent on the kid to select what they need.
They can. We always encourage them, if they have a bad allergy, to contact our buildings, because sometimes there'll be outages and stuff. So the, if it's really severe allergy, the best thing to do is call the cafeteria manager, and they'll check to make sure there's no allergens. And they can call that kitchen or office and say, hey, make sure he takes it, because he's not taking it. We will go to that level if it's needed, that they know their child's not listening. We'll say, okay, we'll make sure. And the other problem we run into often is where they'll say they have a dairy allergy, and then all of a sudden, they comes up on pizza day, and, well, I want pizza. No, you have a dairy. So then we need something in writing from parents saying, because sometimes you can have different dairy items, even though you have a dairy. But we want something in writing for, just for liability's sake, that says, yes, on pizza day, he can have pizza. I checked your menu, and that's, that works for his dairy allergy. And we, okay, then we'll make sure he gets that. So we work with them. It's just a matter of they need to, and we want something in writing to make it official. We don't want to just have, you know, somebody say, do that. And the next, when they get sick, they, well, why'd you give them that? So we want to make sure we have something in writing.
I have a question. How come we're using fat-free milk?
And all of it's required fat-free to some degree?
Well, we're seeing, really?
Yeah.
Because I think that's one of the things, I remember pediatricians saying that some of the kids weren't getting a full complement of calories across the board. We're heavy-loading our kids with carbs.
Yeah.
But not the fats and the proteins.
Yeah, the USDA has regulations on, we can't serve whole milk. And they're the ones that say that a certain percentage of milk is allowable.
So we do have reduced, a reduced and skim?
Yes.
There's both of those.
Yes.
Yeah, 2%.
But 2%, yeah.
And 0%.
But just, we can't offer whole. Some parents want whole, and we can't do that.
Yeah, because I think whole is going to be deemed the healthier.
And once USDA deems it, we will serve it.
And then there's the chocolate milk.
Yes. There will be a slide about that here shortly, too.
Yeah.
And the fat is necessary for brain development, so whatever.
Well, for a while, they took, they took proteins out of breakfast, which we know proteins are good at breakfast. I mean, and they literally call a protein a grain at breakfast by regulation. So that was a little confusing. The first year they threw that at us, it was like, oh, okay, a protein's a grain now. Okay, except at lunch. Then it's a protein again.
Interesting.
So it was interesting when they threw those regulations out at us.
It was catch-up still.
It's different.
So, are you done there, Steve? Or on that one? Yep. You want the webpage?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. And then also, the, the link to the online menu system is here on the TCAP webpage, on the food service site of the menu. We have a lot of information here as far as typically submitting free and reduced applications. This year, we're doing an education benefits forum instead. We're not doing free and reduced, because all the students are eating for free. So they've changed that format. But we have links to those forums. We have links to the, our different wellness policy, and then also the online menu system.
Sorry, could you repeat the name of that benefits program, forum?
Right there.
The CEP Education Benefits? Okay. Because don't we rely on that to inform the 31AA?
Yes. So it used to be free and reduced applications, because that was identifying who qualified. Now it's CEP education, and we still encourage everybody to fill out the form, even though it's free. That's a little bit of a challenge, and it's something we have to keep in front of parents, that it does affect grant allocations in the future.
Right. That is really important. So it'll still be at orientations?
Yes.
K through 12?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I hope it's an easier form, too. I've heard the.
Yeah.
It's, it's very similar. They actually tailored the free-reduced form to utilize for this in the state of Michigan. So it's, it's very similar, but it's pretty basic.
Yep.
The nice thing is if you fill it out online, it will let you know if you've forgotten something required. Whereas if they fill it out on paper and they've missed something, we can't submit it.
You have to follow up.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So a little bit about our food. Per the TCAP Wellness Policy, our foods are free from food dyes and high-fructose corn syrup. Both that's listed in the wellness policy. All of our food served meets or exceeds USDA food regulations. We just went through administrative review this year, and we are in compliance with all the regulations. We do aim to reduce sugar in our, in our operations. For example, we don't allow chocolate milk at the elementaries at breakfast. We only have 2% in skim white milk offered. And, and we have all reduced sugar cereals when we offer cereals. So we're constantly monitoring that. And actually, USDA is coming out with new regulations in a couple of years that mandate less sugar in the foods. But obviously, the manufacturers have to catch up with that. They can't just say that you're going to do this, and the manufacturers not have made everything less sugar. So we, since a lot of our food is commodities, but they got to change the commodities before we can start that program. But we are already proactive in reducing the sugar before the USDA requires it. So the Lunch Buddies Program, which Heidi was a big part of last year through the wellness program, and Ty is, was a wonderful success. At the end of last year, I asked them to introduce a Lunch Buddy survey. One reason, it gives those parents something to talk about with the children, ask them what their favorite food is and least favorite food is. And it gives us feedback on things the children like and don't like. It's not perfect, but anytime we can get more information from our customers, we'd like to do it. And the Lunch Buddy program has been so successful that I felt that would be a good, because they like talking to Lunch Buddies. So I figured, why not do a little survey and give them something to talk about. And we also have, it looks just like that, on our menu page, the food service suggestion box. So anybody can go on there, as they're looking through the menu, before they go into menu, they can click on the suggestion box, and that comes right to Steve and I. So we, anytime they want to give us input, good, bad, or indifferent, we want to hear it from our customers. So, and that's the end of the thing, unless you have more questions for us, which we are happy to answer.
This is great. Really helpful. Go ahead.
Any other questions?
I did. I did. Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Really insightful. In terms of that last point about the, the surveys, I, I was just thinking, I wonder how often we've surveyed our students, staff, parents even. And I was thinking, like, yeah, it'd be tough to get the students to respond. But maybe if parents got a survey, they could work with their kid to respond. I know you have a lot of constraints with, you know, the USDA regulations. But to the extent you do want that customer feedback, have you, over time, even before Lunch Buddies, collected data from staff or?
We have done surveys here and there. I mean, not all the time, but we have. The reason I wanted the suggestion box up is because it is something anybody can go into. Sometimes, you know, over the years, I've gotten some suggestions that I wouldn't want to repeat. But there, there is, it is a chance for them to give it. And, you know, you can tell when it's a child or a parent giving the suggestion based on what they say. It's, you know, why can't we have pizza every day? And that's usually not a parent asking that.
Yeah, right.
So I, yes, I, I look for different ways to get more information from the customers. And, and we also, every, every month, I have a Kitchen Leader meeting, and then we go over the next month's menu. And as I said, they're the people, and the players in the field, and they're outstanding. And they'll tell me if something's not selling, or what the kids, I mean, they hear it all from the kids as they're coming through the line, what they like and don't like. So we let them pick the menu for the next month and change anything that isn't going well, or add something that the kids really want to have. So that, that is our best line of information, is directly from our kitchen staff, who talk to the kids regularly. And kids tell them what they like and don't like.
And I'm guessing teachers really bring in their own lunches, right? They're not eating the captain's food.
We have a certain amount of staff that is with us.
Do they get surveyed?
No.
No?
But they will tell our staff what they want and don't want.
It's an automatic server.
Yeah, okay.
Tom, could you share, you know, sometimes we have disruptions in food supply and changes? Like, can you talk a little bit about how that's gone the last, you know, couple of years, and where that's at now? You know, I think sometimes people go, wait a minute, they said it was going to be this, and it turned into that. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. The worst was, obviously, the pandemic, as everything was messed up during that. But they have gotten much better. But it still happens. We'll order something. And for the most part, we'd, like, if we ordered chicken nuggets, we try to get another chicken nugget. But this year, we added, we had always grouped all our elementary buildings together on the menus. This year, we separated them all out. So if some building doesn't get the kind of chicken nuggets that we have on a menu, we can change the menu instantly to the type of chicken nugget they get, so that they get the proper allergens and carbs and everything they need for all the special diets updated. And so we spent a little bit extra, but it's, it's a wonderful program. IT just got all our new monitors out, and they're working to get that program working with our system. So, and it just did work the other day. So we're real excited to roll that out this year. And for the most part, we're pretty good about getting a, an apple for an apple. But, you know, sometimes you, it just, there isn't that product available. And then we do our best to tell them to tell the office, to announce that, hey, today, we're having a chicken patty sandwich instead of chicken nuggets, because there is no chicken nuggets available. So, but we still try to get the word out. And we also let the children change right up till, we, we take a count in the morning to try to get as close as we can what, how to cook. But I always tell them to cook more. And we let the kids change if, because I know from morning to noon, I might change my mind on what I want to eat. So I wouldn't hold a child to that, what they said, because they might have raised their hand, because their best friend Joe raised his hand in the morning, and then they got down there and saw Bosco stick and said, no, I'd rather have a Bosco stick. So we let them change. And also, we don't want any child having a meltdown, because he didn't get what he wanted for lunch, and then ruining the teacher's day, a whole afternoon, and the principal's whole afternoon by just because we didn't, he didn't get what he wanted for lunch. So.
And, and two other things. One is, remember, we had an issue with milk, maybe last year, as far as supply?
Yep.
Milk, lettuce?
Milk, milk is on and off again. They, it wasn't the milk supply, it was the milk curtains. They couldn't get the curtains. They had plenty of milk, but no curtains, which makes it a little difficult. So, but they were able to get shelf-stable milk, which is still the same milk, only it's made a little bit different. So it lasts longer, and we, we can keep it like six months. So now I have to order large quantities to keep backup of the shelf-stable milk, so that if, for some reason, they don't have curtains, we can then give them the shelf-stable milk instead of the regular milk. And there's a small difference in it. Sometimes you got to shake it a little, because it's a little chunky.
Thanks, Tom. Didn't need that, no.
Too much information.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I had a question of, just thinking environmentally. I love that you're collecting food and giving it to Goodwill. But are there opportunities to further reduce waste and reuse, reduce, thinking of reduce, reuse, recycle, like composting? We have the greenhouse at the Montessori. I don't know if that's been talked about or explored in the past.
I, the composting is kind of more in the facilities world, because they're the ones that would have to have the location for it, watch out for the rodents and the bugs and the things that obviously compost can draw, which becomes a problem with school property. You don't want.
Any returning of food waste to farmers for, to use for animal feed?
No, we, we don't do that. And, you know, that, again, would have to be done. I don't want to have individuals taking it out. I would rather it be like Goodwill Food Rescue, because then it starts becoming, well, I'm going to take this home for my animals. And you don't know if it's really going to the animals, or they're just taking extra food out. I, I know in the past, I've had where a teacher actually went around and said, are you going to eat that apple? And took it off. And then we got a call, not in this district, but another district, that there was a teacher stealing the child's food, which did not go well. So you got to be careful about.
Right.
So, you got to be careful about, and, and the same with when we give it to snacks and stuff. We, we've had situations where they started encouraging kids to take extra fruit from the salad bars to bring back to their offices to hand out to kids, which is costing us more money when the kid could have come down and eaten with us. So, you know, if they want, we give it, all you can eat, eat it while you're here and you won't be hungry in the afternoon if you eat all the hot veggie and the fruits and, you know, all the veggies we offer. So, we, we just want to be careful that it's not.
Yeah. And you haven't had any farmers asking for?
No, no.
For feed to their animals, okay. Go ahead.
Don't have enough. Most of our stuff seems to be more orchard plant-based here than livestock. Maybe some chickens, but.
Yeah. Okay. Anything we can do to support you as a board?
It's wonderful here. We, we enjoy it and we get great support from board and administration. And the wellness committee does a wonderful job of getting the word out and helping us. And they've done surveys with us too for the wellness policy. We've done extensive surveys, both of teachers and students. So, that was a, getting back to the well, the survey question, we did do, every three years we have to do a survey for the wellness committee to be in compliance with USDA, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Two quick questions. The waste, are you seeing an increase in waste? Or just pretty much the same amount of waste from year to year with the free lunch program?
It's pretty much the same. You know, I've been doing it for 40 years. I started as a custodian and carried a lot of that waste out when I started my career. So, back then, you'd give, the, the kids had to take all five components. There was an offer versus like we offer, so they don't have to take everything. You still have to take a fruit or vegetable. But back then it was five components and in most cases, in those days, they offered a dessert. So, the kids ate the dessert and threw away the other four components. So, there was a lot more waste probably even then because you had to give all five components and you gave dessert, so nobody ate the regular meal. They just ate the dessert and threw everything away, so it's just.
How many components now are they required to take?
Three of the five. Three of the four at breakfast and three of the five at lunch. And one has to be a fruit or vegetable.
And this is going to be just weird, but we had talked about, John's smiling, of course.
We appreciate the disclaimer.
But we talked about apprentice programs. And you were saying at one point, sometimes, you know, you're, you look for staff frequently. I don't know if there could be any thought of developing an apprentice program in the kitchen. And I realize you're dealing with school days and scheduling, all things around that. But I, it's just, I'm throwing it out there as just a pie in the sky to think about.
I know I've worked with different programs, like culinary programs. In my old district, they actually had one in our building. It was the blended public school and vocational school. So, they would come over and work with us and get credit for working. But I don't know that the one at Northwest right now is.
Yeah, career services has something.
I mean, I'd certainly talk to them if they were, well, they needed that help. We do internship. I have an intern coming here in another month from colleges, dietitian interns. But I'd love to do culinary students and allow them to work in our programs. If they would contact us, I'd be open to discussing that with them.
Just throwing it out.
Well, thanks again. I found this really useful and insightful, so we appreciate it.
I actually have a quick question. You mentioned the Health and Wellness Committee. It's my understanding that the Health and Wellness Committee put forward a proposal to move from the four-week rotation to the six-week, to a six-week rotation. And had their rationale and discussion about why that would be more beneficial to the district and the students to have more variety. And I wondered why maybe that wasn't considered for implementation.
I'm not sure, the four-week to six-week for what?
Food rotate, the rotation of menus for four weeks to six weeks.
We, we rotate about every two weeks, we have a cycle menu, but then that changes monthly. And the reason we do a two-week cycle menu is so we don't have food waste. Obviously, we want to reuse the same items a couple of times, make sure we use everything up. So, we do, every month we do a two-week cycle menu. But again, each month as they tell me what's working and what isn't working, we will pop in new items in that two-week cycle menu for variety. And at the, that's at the elementary. At the secondaries, they usually are offering eight to 12 items, entrees a day with cold and hot meals. So, that's really not a problem for them. They, there's so many things offered that they can try something different all through the month, every single day with the varieties that are offered each day at those buildings. But the, the elementaries, we tend to do a two-week cycle menu. And then the next month, we, I have a kitchen leader meeting and say, what's working, what isn't working? What's something you'd like to see? And they tell me what the kids are saying and then we pop in new ideas. And sometimes we just go to food shows and see something we like and try that out. The kids will tell you quickly, you got to try it two or three times. And that's why the two-week cycle menu sometimes comes in handy because you can't get a child to try something new right away necessarily. Some will, but a lot of them, they have to see it two or three times before they'll even try something. And then, or they have Johnny say, that was really good, you should try that. And the next time they come through, they try it. So, it's just the nature of children, that's why we do taste tests too. It's not so much to get them to eat a produce as to get them to try something new. I know as a parent how hard it was to get my kids to try new things. So, if we entertain them with a taste test where they get to put a sticker up and there's an adult there giving them the food and smiling at them and they try something, we've already won. No matter if they like it or don't like it, we've won because they tried something new. And that's why I like taste tests. Anytime you can get children to try something they haven't tried before in life, you're already ahead of the game, no matter if they liked it or don't like it. Because the next time hopefully they'll try something else they don't like until they find things they do like.
So, just for clarity, for some reason you're told that there was a four-week cycle for that? And Tom, you're saying it's a two-week cycle?
It's a two-week cycle monthly, but it changes from month to month. And the reason for the two-week cycle is just so we use up product and don't have hundreds of things. Our new walk-in freezers, thank you very much, that, you know, and all of a sudden even the free, the walk-ins aren't big enough to handle everything because we, we change the menu so often that they only eat, you know, there's a half of a case of everything left, it starts filling up the freezers. So, you want to make sure you're cycling to use as much product up as possible to reduce waste because eventually that product will be thrown out if we don't serve it often enough, so.
Heidi, do you remember the conversation with Health and Wellness Committee that Andrew is referring to?
I do not remember that. So, if it was a proposal, I'd have to go back and sift through because we have, we had multiple proposals. I'd have to go through and look through that. I don't, I don't remember that coming all the way to us. And you were at all the meetings with us, so we'll have to go back and look to see what we can.
Yeah, I don't recall. I'm not saying it didn't happen, we could have, I could have missed it, but.
But I want, I was thinking it was a conversation.
You were there too, Beth, do you remember?
I was hit and miss too because there was a while I just wasn't, I didn't, wasn't informed of when the meetings were.
And I thought the conversation was about, like, your frequency actually was that when you looked at the rotation of the two-week and the four-week. But I have to go back and check on that.
So, anything you have, if you'll let me know.
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying we wouldn't change. I'm just giving you explanation why we do what we're doing.
Okay.
Hey, Andrew. I have one quick question, but I think you're going to get a kick out of it. So, in all sincerity, you know, to us adults, asparagus is a delicacy, right? You go out to a restaurant, anything with asparagus, that's seasonal, very, we seem very posh for having it, right? So, I think it's really cool that we had that partnership with the farmers. But it is kind of an acquired taste and I'm just wondering how popular it is among the youngest children in particular.
It actually is pretty popular. I'd say probably about half the kids.
Yeah, we're pretty fortunate. We get so fresh that it has, you know, the best taste possible to it.
And, and sometimes it's just cool looking, you know? It looks like a kind of a space thing out there, a big long sphere of. I don't know, maybe they eat because of that.
The whole stalk, not just tips, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But we roast it and yes, with garlic and.
That's good.
Excellent.
Butter spray.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
For the information, we will move on to.
We're going to take off if you guys.
You didn't bring us any samples.
They were still cooking when I left, so.
We will move on to our next item, which is our capital project update.
All right. Want to follow that or not? Okay. Well, we're going to start out with the innovation of manufacturing centers update here. You'll notice as I go through some of these, there's a little difference in what's happening at each site. And that's because we're taking a proactive approach to keep us on track and, and schedule with these projects to get them wrapped up on time. So, steel framing is up at both sites. You'll see here, this has got the joists are in place. The metal decking is just starting to go on. When we get to West, you'll see the metal decking is almost finished there. But interior slabs and that for the new addition. At Central High, they're working more on the inside of the existing building, doing the renovations there. So, we're already got studs and drywall and door frames and window frames in place there. Some of the metal decking starting to go on the joists for the second floor level area. And I thought I had pictures of the restrooms there, but I don't. Oh, sorry. And then this is West Senior High where they're working more on the exterior addition piece. And that's stud wall framing, cold form framing going up on the outside, getting ready to receive the next layer of wall finishes. And you can see the metal deck is on the roof and on the floor in the lower area there. And they're finishing that up, getting ready for the next round of envelope assemblies. And then the interior at West Senior High, there's a lot of work in the corridors there with the mechanical systems, mechanical and electrical systems. Then we're over at Saban, doors, frames, finishes, furniture, casework. There's a lot going in over there right now. And we are still unfortunately waiting for the rest of the electrical switchgear to show up. And that's what's been the holdup there. They wired everything backwards on this project. They usually go from the panels to the devices, but we've gone from the devices to the panels so that when the panels show up, they can make the connections that way.
How are we doing on budget and time with this?
Well, budget, we're fine. Time, we're beyond our expected deadline for this.
Is it June 30th?
Yeah. So, shelving units are going in for storage. Some of the rooms are finishing up, but again, it's, it's the electrical component that's holding us up. We're doing a change out of the supply system. We've got to change the transformer and the main electrical panel that feeds these areas to get it up to three-phase for the power and that to run the equipment that we're putting in there, so.
So, do we think we'll be operational at the early part of the new school year?
No.
We're anticipating September 30th as of right now.
And we've communicated that to all of our staff and, and our print shop. We are doing some, working with some of our local vendors to help, you know, with that. They've got that all set and we've notified teachers now that, you know, get your stuff in now. You know, if you have stuff early on, start thinking about that and get it so that our print shop folks can get, you know, still copies and get all that. Plus, we have done some contingency of extra paper and so some copies do need to be made at buildings that that can be done. But hopefully by that date, we're able to be up and running and be able to, you know, fully be able to have the capacity ourselves.
We are setting things up, getting things in place so that when power comes on, they are ready to go and that. So, a lot of the storage is being built and installed right now in the spaces where we can and that, but.
The next big significant date is August 10th. That's when the electrical gear should be here, so we'll have a better.
At one point they were saying like November.
Right. And that's, Square D is a supplier of most of this electrical equipment. And the thing is with them, when they put in their order, they told them that we would have the equipment the end of June on the order. And then when they went, were getting ready for it and went back to check their order, it said November. And they don't inform you of this. And so, then they get after them and then they got it to move to October. And then on our contractor and, and our electrical contractors we have, they did this nationwide search out there. And they're pulling components from all around the country to get us what we need to get it done and put in place, so. And that's just some of it piled up there waiting for the rest of the components to show up, so.
Is there a cost to this delay other than time?
Just time.
Time and outsourcing some of the work.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Well.
Well, so that actually costs us too?
Yep.
To outsource it, like, are we talking like copy central and?
Yeah, we have about five vendors that the print shop is working with and they have some limitations as well as it relates to binding and color paper, they have limitations. So, we've shared that information with staff on what our limitations are, but that the work will still be done. The print shop is, they added a system into their existing software to identify which staff member took it where and so that we can follow up with the vendor to make sure it's done on time.
Have you quantified the costs?
It's, it's going to be hard to do until we see all the orders.
You think like thousands though, not over 10,000?
Yes.
Not over 10,000?
No, yes, over 10,000.
Oh, will be? Wow. Okay. All right, well, we'll cross our fingers for the electrical stuff. And then, and then once that arrives, do we have the people to install all that?
Oh, yes. Everybody's waiting. Consumers Energy has to come in and do some of this work. And they've been riding the contractors to get the work done so they can come and do their work, which is, which seems weird to me because usually it's the other way around. So, and then out at Long Lake, we're doing a renovation to a room for GSRP. We added a door on the exterior and a toilet room within the classroom. That's it.
Are, are the materials you're waiting for, are they US-made or are they?
Yes.
It's US-made?
Yeah, it's, it's like, it was somebody compared it to going to ordering car from a car dealer like GM or Ford, ordering it from the factory and them telling you it was going to be put on the line and done by June and then not telling you that it wasn't put into the line and, and you call them and they, well, well, too bad, you know? You don't want it, we'll sell it to somebody else, so.
All right, thanks, Paul. We will move on to our next agenda item, which is finance.
So, not a lot here as far as new from the budget. We are, a lot of grumblings across the state from, you know, superintendents and, you know, there, there is, I think, some real angst that especially the 31AA was cut over 95%. I think that there's a lot of conversations and lanting of that dissatisfaction. For the first time, Ken, in my career, I, I actually think there might be something that could happen in either, you know, a supplemental, I hope before the November election, but could happen in lame duck period. You know, it'll be interesting if conversations still happen. But I think that, that idea that nothing was put on the foundation and nothing in that 31AA, there's just a whole lot of negative press and everything still. You know, even the governor signed the budget, you know, all the headlines were governor signs budget. However, you know, dissatisfaction by many with, you know, the result. So, we'll keep an eye on that, continuing to advocate in both of those areas. And if there's any more news on that, I'll be sure to let you know.
Thanks. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is our strategic plan update.
Yes. That's me. Everybody's got a clicker today. All right, so just to talk about a couple of our goals and the finance and operations. Department, um, so this, this goal is related to safety and security using best practices. As you know, um, we started, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, with the first item being, uh, working with secure education consultants for, um, an analysis of their district and recommendations. Other than a couple of items, uh, we have accomplished all of the recommendations. Uh, some of the recommendations weren't clear or contradicted what another one of the consultants said, so we, Patrick and I have looked at those to identify the need. Um, but most of the recommendations that they made have been completed. Um, and then a lot of the work really, I'm gonna let Patrick talk about because we, we have been making, um, a lot of improvements as it relates to training staff and being prepared for an emergency and then also paying attention to our equipment as it relates to security cameras, blue lights, now vape sensors, things like that. So I'm gonna let him give an overview of some of the things that, um, he's been overseeing and then you'll be free to ask questions.
All right, thank you. So it's a extensive list. I could talk all day on this and my staff knows I'd like to talk a lot anyway, so I'll try to keep it as short as possible and kind of do a, a quick review. First and foremost, we did establish and emerged the operations team and what this is comprised of are representatives from secondary schools, elementary schools, uh, social workers, facilities workers, and we have them come all together and it's a really nice way for me to be able to bounce things off of them, to talk to them about, here's the latest with school safety, I'd like to implement this, or I'd like to work with you to implement that, and for them to really say, you know, this would probably work really good for secondary, but this is why it probably won't work for elementary. And then to brainstorm, then if that's not going to work for elementary like that, then what can we do? Um, so it's been, uh, a, I would say a very good success. Julian has worked very hard on that with me and, um, it's, it has proven to be a good team. We're hopefully going to expand that group a little bit farther, uh, but again, it's made up of just kind of all walks from the TCAP system. And what I'd like to add, which we don't have on there, are students, uh, this year or a, a couple of student representatives, just so we can encompass everybody. Going into reunification drills, so we did our second one, as I know you've heard this year, uh, this again, I think was a very big success. And just to let you know, from what I can gather, we are the only school in the state of Michigan that are doing this in person. A lot of other schools are doing this tabletop, so they just kind of go over it, but we are truly kind of at the front of this. Now, some have done partial ones, but ours was all comprehensive, so it, it was from start to finish. And this year was the first year that we actually introduced student volunteers and they ended up actually being great, so more to come on that. This will be an annual, annual event. It's a very important event. It's a very important topic because, yes, we have the, an emergency that, that'll happen, but then where do, where do we go from there? Or, you know, what's the next step? Um, so the reunification drills have proven, uh, uh, successful for sure. Uh, as far as administration training goes, so we are at the point where all of the administration team have been, there've been reviews with CPR, AED, we now carry Narcan in our secondary buildings, um, we have stop the bleed kits in all of the buildings, uh, but we're gonna expand that. So, um, one of the things that just came out again with legislature, our new teachers will need to be certified in CPR, AED and first aid if they aren't already. Uh, the nice thing is, we just recently certified a group of us within TCAPs that are instructors, so we can, we can keep it all in-house. We don't have to go outside to the American Red Cross or the American Heart Association. We are certified American Heart Association instructors and now can bring that to meet the requirements of the new legal, uh, requirements that are out, as well as, what I'd like to do is just simply keep expanding that to not just administration, but to really anybody who wants it. Obviously, there are requirements, coaches are, are a good example, they're required to be certified in this, so we can keep up with their training again in-house and not have to go outside and have to, um, you know, reach upon resources and community that might take time, because like, for instance, we're coming up against the next school year and there are coaches that need to be recertified and it's very simple for us to do that. So that was a pretty big deal. Safety and security presentations, I know a few of you have been to those in the schools. That's a, that's a normal thing, that's something I will continue. I think just being able to repeat some of the best practice to staff is very, very important. Yes, we can't go, here's a huge book on safety and security, make sure you memorize every single page. That's not, obviously that's not going to happen, but if I can take kind of the high level stuff, the very important stuff, talk to staff about it, especially new staff, this goes a long way. So that will continue, that'll be something that'll continue. I'm happy to report that our school resource officer pool has grown. Um, these are police officers who are in the community that are in our schools. Uh, we have, uh, Officer Nolan at Central High School. He is, uh, the officer that we have the Michigan State Police grant through, he's, that we fund and help fund him at Central High School. He also helps in the city schools with us. He'll go to the different city schools and assist if needed, uh, but strictly assigned to the school. We have a deputy at, uh, West Senior High and she also helps at West Middle School. She's a Garfield Township Deputy. And the addition now is, uh, East Middle School. I've been told by the Sheriff's Department that East Middle School will now have an assigned deputy. I haven't met her yet, but it sounds like that's coming, uh, starting this year. So, so nice improvement and again, she, she will be on that side to cover kind of those east side county schools as requested.
And where would that one be funded from? The one at?
That is strictly the, the Sheriff's Department and the township.
The county.
Just.
And East Bay or which, which?
East Bay, yes, East Bay.
East Bay Township.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's an actual deputy, not a school resource officer, but they come in and work with us as if they are.
And they're seven, five days.
Yes. Yes.
Not full-time, but?
Right, not, not full-time. So our one at Central High School, he is full-time because we partnered with the Traverse City Police Department, so he is full-time, five days a week in that school or any other school that we ask for him to assist in, whether that be for behavioral threat assessments for, for students or, um, something happened in a parking lot with parents or something like that. We don't need to call the police department directly, we can ask him in the city to handle those and he does. But as far as, and Christine's right, to, to a little bit more clarification, the deputy at West Senior High and now at East Middle School, they're what's referred to as community resource officers for the Sheriff's Department, but the townships have identified that being in the schools are the most important thing as community resource officers during the school year, and so that's where they will be. So it's a very nice addition, uh, but they're, again, like she said, they're, they're not full-time like Officer Nolan is at Central High School.
And we're cost sharing with these?
No.
No?
No.
None of these?
Only those, the one at Traverse City, uh, Central.
Okay.
And that was through a Michigan State Police grant.
Right. And the city of Traverse and TCAPs, right? Like 50, 25, 25?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, okay.
We're very fortunate, Mike Shay called me, you know, and offered in East Bay Township so they'd be willing to support. And so, uh, you know, really very thankful to both, you know, Garfield Township and East Bay Township.
Absolutely.
And their support along with the sheriff to provide, you know, um, some, you know, service with them.
Yeah, and, and just to piggyback on that, Sheriff Shay as well as his staff have been, I mean, when, when I call, they're, they answer it first. If for anything we might need along with the superintendent, they've, they've been excellent to work with and the city, of course, so, um, so very good, we've got a very good relationship that we will continue with them. As far as blue lights and security camera upgrades, we kind of touched on the security cameras, uh, and just to kind of add to it with the blue lights, that's, that's one of those things that I'm constantly working on and going, you know, this would look, a, a camera right here probably isn't the best, but if we moved it over here, we can see a few other things, this, and as well as blue lights. If I'm walking up to a school as somebody on the outside, right here, I, I really don't see an alarm system, a, a visual alarm system, why don't we move some things? So the technology department has been excellent with the help with that. Uh, so that's a, that's a ongoing, um, um, task and obviously Evan spoke to that as well. As far as the cyber incident plan with Evan not being here, I really can't speak to this, so I, I won't get into depth, but we certainly test this recently and, um, I know they do have an incident plan set in place, uh, for, for cyber incidents it has.
And between Dr. Van Wagner and Evan and myself, we've really gone through, um, and made some changes and recommendations based on the event that took place.
Exterior door numbers, if you haven't noticed already, when you walked in even today, you should have seen an exterior door number, so that those, we have five schools left, I believe, Julie, five schools left that those will be on. Uh, otherwise, if you've looked around the district, you'll start to see those popping up very, very quickly. Um, so in the next few weeks, that, that should be, that should be, uh, it. And it's, the reason for those are for first responders, so if we say have a medical event at a elementary school, as all of you know, we don't want the whole parade of firefighters and medics and law enforcement through the hallway because obviously that will completely disrupt whatever's going on. We can simply say, send, central dispatcher can go, well, it's in room 104, send the first responders to door four, have them hang a right and it's the second classroom on the right, so they don't necessarily need to go through the front door. Um, and if there's an emergency, when someone calls 911 or when someone says in this building there's an emergency, those maps which are on the next one, uh, I'm sorry, I skipped that one, which are, this is the one above that, the critical mapping, those critical maps are digital, they pop up on the dispatcher screen and it shows them the door numbers, the school and where the 911 call came from in real time and they can tell first responders on, on their way there where to go and, and how to access the building. So those, those, it's a very, very neat system and those maps don't necessarily have every single nook and cranny marked, is more as here's the main hallways, here's the main stairways and here are all the classrooms and rooms that people could be using. So very, very neat, those are live now and those will all be new to all the teachers and administrators this year in their emergency operation plans, which every school has. So it's a very neat system that tied together with those exterior door numbers, um, that it'll just make things a lot quicker if, as needed, so very, very neat stuff. Exterior door replacements, I've worked with Paul as far as identifying which exterior doors need to be replaced per security issues or safety issues, um, just doors that are crumbling. Obviously, Paul can speak to this more than I can, um, but we certainly looked at doors, yes, like we've identified those are the ones and are working towards replacing them as necessary. And then interior classroom shades, we're right in the middle actually of doing this for the whole district. We're talking shades that are simply, that cover any sort of window, say like this window right here actually does have one on it, I can see it, um, we have them in this building and that is for an emergency where we need to shelter in place or we need to hold or lock down. The idea is to cover those up because quite simply out of sight, out of mind. And so, um, we're going, we're moving forward with that in the entire district and that is a best practice for safety and security, um, I would say throughout the nation. So we're just moving forward with that. Again, we're right in the middle of that, Julie and I have been working at that recently and should be, fingers crossed, done by the start of the school year for all of the schools. It's in three schools currently and including this building, we have them here as well, so.
That specific item was identified, identified by secure education consultants. What we have, which I understand why we have it from a teacher perspective, is we have a lot of paper, um, and a lot of other things on windows and doors leading to the hallway. The problem is, is it's not temporary and so it doesn't allow somebody to actually see out if it's safe and a lot of times it's actually on the outside, so even if they absolutely had to see out, there's nothing they can take down. So we're trying to be, um, we're trying to provide them with what they need, which sometimes is privacy or I know a lot at the secondary schools, kids in the halls are distractions. It allows them to actually close it, but it's not permanent. So if they need to be able to peek outside or if they don't have to have it closed, they, it's very easy to put up and down. The construction paper and some of the film and some of that is actually kind of obtrusive, so, um, this will be a little bit easier ease of use.
Very easy.
And available for what the purpose is. We have, we have a lot of issues at Christmas with decorating boards. We're always the bad guys, but there is a reason why we ask them not to cover certain things, especially when they block cameras and.
Yes.
Yeah, that's been kind of an issue lately. We have a lot of creative people.
Very creative.
And we want to nurture that, just.
Yes, we do, we do. We want to provide different options.
Right.
So I, I would say this is certainly not an all encompassing list, but it's kind of a highlight of the larger things we have going on. And it's, it's, what's interesting, at least for my job, is every year it, this just, we just take this and just build on it. I can safely say just within the almost two years I've been here, TCAP certainly is a leader in safety and security, even before I got here. It's been excellent and, and a lot of fun, quite frankly, to just build on that and to really bring us to the forefront as a school district. So, um, they are hiring more, they, meaning around the state, other districts are hiring more me, so there's more of my counterpart around the state that I hear from weekly, sometimes two times a week where they're going, we have nothing, we absolutely have nothing, where should I start? What do you have? What, what would be the easiest thing to start with and build from there? Because they see our operation, I go, wow, you know, that's, that's pretty amazing.
We might have to start contracting them out. He gets a lot of phone calls on how to do things and we have to manage that with what we've got going on here too.
Do you have a national association or state association of, um, you know, safety and security personnel that can help people with best prac, practices, so it's not all on you?
So, should start that. So, no, there isn't that, um, the Michigan State Police recently started the Office of School Safety within the state of Michigan, um, and they, they're kind of a warehouse for new, uh, safety and security staff or directors, administrators to go to, to get some of these best practice, uh, but it's, in my opinion, very, very small at this point compared to what we have. What, what they're saying, it's, it's comforting to know that when, whatever they say, it's like, oh, great, we already have that, that's excellent and we're even to the next generation of that. So the state does have it, there are some, there are a few organizations, um, nationwide that do conferences and things like that, but, um, um, so they're certainly there, but there, there isn't anything specifically for administrators, like an organization of administrators that do school safety, that, there isn't that.
And so Detroit hasn't started coming to you or Grand Rapids or?
Yeah, not Detroit.
Ann Arbor has not started the urban centers?
Some in Grand Rapids area, two in the Lansing area. I've had some out of state, some in the UP, um, um.
And locally, quite a bit locally.
Yeah, quite a bit locally. GTAX just now has a, a safety and security administrator, so, um, but they aren't year round. They're, and they're, they're, I think he's only contracted to work 20 to 25 hours a week, so, so pretty small, but also has a law enforcement background, I know him very well and, and so it's, it's easy for me to just kind of talk to him a couple of times about where to start, you know, so.
I'm gonna throw a curveball to you.
Oh, okay.
And that is, do we have driver's ed here at the school? Do you know?
No.
Do we teach that?
No.
Given that there was an 18-year-old just involved in a car accident that was fatal.
All local private companies and it's not cheap.
I can tell you. They typically hold the classes in our buildings, but it is a different company altogether.
We, um, and that, you know, you know, I actually tried and was lobbying, Senator Camilleri, uh, the chair of the House or the Senate Appropriations Committee for K-12, was looking at a pilot of doing one for kids of especially, um, at risk and, and, uh, low income. And, uh, he wasn't able to get it through. I did, I did put us up as a pilot.
I, I think, I think we should try that one again, cause I think that it used to be the schools and teaching kids safety, you know, in a way that everybody wants.
The big thing that kind of happened with that is legacy costs. The legacy cost when their employees and go through us, we have to pay right now that 24 through 23 cents of every dollar. We have to charge more because we don't get anything from the state for that program. And so there's no funding, there's no supplement in any way, shape or form for the car, you know, the insurance for it with kids, all of that.
The property.
And that's, and so that's what I talked with Senator Camilleri on and he actually, he, he brought it to me and he was looking for about five districts around the state to see if they could support a pilot. His chief of staff called me after the budget, said he's still interested in it and that we are on the list of if there's a pilot to try and do that, you know, and we talked to him. And we talked about maybe that there'd be money to be able to purchase a car, you know, be able to pay that. But the legacy cost, that's where private industries of these companies that are doing all that, they don't pay those. You know, from that standpoint that we do, is you just often hear me say, which thankfully, that has been bought down some. But we're at 14%, I think, with, with the paydown, 14, 15% now.
Yeah, with the new.
You know, with the budget. So, but still, that's 14, 15 cents of every dollar that we have to charge extra that private industry does.
And, yeah, my dad was a driver's ed teacher. And the only time Interlock had ever had driver's ed offered, Dad did it as a part of the charity.
There you go. So if we can get some funding and some element for it, I'm willing to, you know, in a vehicle. That was kind of my big thing with him.
Yeah, because you need the dual controls.
So, you know, so it is something on my radar and something that I'm trying to look at.
Yeah. Patrick, back to you. I just wanted to, a couple of comments here. The EOT, Emergency Operation Team, you were mentioning you would like to get students. So as you very well know, there, at the Career Tech Center, there is that law enforcement or public safety.
Yes.
Academy.
Yes.
So I'm, I mean, that might be a lead for TCAP students there that would be interested in this. And then there's some talk about starting a junior ROTC program at the Career Tech Center as well. So those might be two sources of TCAP students for you to start with, anyway. Reunification drills, I guess, just in terms of our teachers' preparedness. Is there, since only so many can participate in person every year, is there like a three-year plan or something, a five-year plan to get all of our teachers trained?
So the, when it, what's nice for reunification in, in our district is we're very fortunate to have a large administrative staff. So we're training the administrative staff in this building more on the process of, of actually running through the reunification. When it comes to teachers at schools, one of the things that I talk about in my training is, here's what's going to happen during a reunification. What I simply need you to do is keep being your teacher for your students at that time and manage them. Same goes with, with the administrative staff. So if there is some sort of emergency, they're clearly going to be, you know, mentally, psychologically, whatever. There, there's going to be some compromise there that my only job for you is to, is to run your, your class and to run your school. We will come in and actually do the process. So yes is the answer. We're, we are teaching them. And I can tell you, this was the first year we actually used all of the administrators, so all the principals, and all the buildings, and all the extra administrators.
We had a couple of teachers.
We did have a couple of teachers, that's true, to be quote-unquote "parents" or, or students, or, you know, or acting in that administrative role. But yes, certainly, we are training them. But the, the bulk of the training is going into the staff that is in this building on how to run the process. Yep.
Thank you. One more thing that came up when the principals reported out to us in June on our cell phone policy. And we've heard this, I think, as trustees, a lot. There's a perception out there from parents that they need to be able to call their kid, or their kid needs to be able to call them in the event of an emergency. Of course, we all hope this never comes to pass, but just in case, I remember we exchanged emails when we were looking at revising our cell phone policy last summer about, does law enforcement, do you recommend that kids would be using their phones and trying to, you know, communicate with parents in the event of a horrible incident? And your answer at the time was, no.
Right.
Right? It would block up our communication system, and it's to, you know, total chaos. And if I remember correctly, you said teachers would have just like one or two students per classroom that would be designated. Anyway, I just want to know if the teachers, if all the staff and students are being informed of what your law enforcement protocols should be in an incident.
So at the time, so best, again, best practice has changed in, in those types of situations. What I had advised you was exactly what, like the Office of School Safety through the Michigan State Police and some of the other organizations recommended. The, the new best practice is to try to slow some of the, for lack of better terms, the group of people that are going to come to that school, the parents, the, the guardians and so forth, and to actually inform them that, no, I'm okay. Please follow the reunification processes necessary. That is now the best practice. That being said, because of the community we live in, and we have that many people on cell phones that quickly, it's going to completely bog the system down. I can say that from a first responder perspective. We are certainly looking at, at items that we can use to help, help mitigate that. I know Evan was at the last reunification, uh, training PD, and was able to go around and look at things like cell coverage and where we'd be able to have good cell coverage versus bad. But yes, moving forward, we're certainly going to talk to staff about if students do use their cell phones in an emergency, they're simply telling their guardians, their parents, that they are okay, and to follow the reunification plan as necessary.
Okay, so that'll be this school year.
That's the plan, is to start, yeah, to start introducing that best practice.
Thank you.
The goal is to get them to send one text.
Yes.
And to encourage parents not to come to the school that they're at, because they won't be there.
Yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
No problem.
And I just have to say, I think hiring you was one of the best things we've done over the last few years. And I hope you stay. Don't get poached by Grand Rapids or anywhere else. We want you here. And we appreciate your work.
That's right. Well, thank you very much.
All right. So moving on to the other goal, which you all are very well aware of what we've been doing as it relates to a three-to-five-year facility plan. Pre-bond planning, that was quite an extensive process and provided us a lot of information for next steps. We do have the programming assessments, facility condition assessments, and cost estimates. We got good guidance from the board on moving forward with the bond vote next Tuesday. And then a lot has been going on within the facilities department as it relates to continuous improvement, effectiveness, priorities, contracting some services out to make sure we're getting the work done. And then the performance management with Train. Paul and I meet with them weekly. They are pretty close to a process of getting a lot of their bids-bats, so they'll know pricing. We're hoping to bring something forward to the board in October as it relates to the work that they'll do over the next two years, which is quite extensive. And then the 2024 bond planning and timeline, we are pretty deep into, not if, but when the bond passes, how we're going to utilize those funds and what it looks like, at least over the next six years. That's about how far we are out right now. What comes first, what's the priority, what's the budget, what's included? How do we tailor projects together to be efficient at the same time? How do we not do too many big projects at once? So that is pretty much the bulk of our work at this moment. Obviously, you know, as soon as the bond passes, everybody wants their work done. So we have to do a lot of prep work up to that point to have some work ready to go. And then the February bond sale. So we are anticipating instead of May, a February bond sale. And we will be bringing, I believe we're planning.
In November of authorization.
Yeah. I think what we'll do is bring a resolution, a draft from the attorneys on the bond sale itself, and when we would be able to utilize the funds, which is actually before February. So the sale will take place in February instead of May.
This is all assuming that we have a positive outcome on August 6th.
We, we still have to plan, so we're planning. Otherwise, we won't be able to do the things in order and on time. So we are getting those resolutions ready and working with legal counsel. Our financial advisor does not advise a sale prior to February. That would be the earliest. And so that's what we're currently working on. Again, that work has to take place regardless of the outcome, or we won't be able to move forward on the work that needs to be done.
So if the, the bond does pass on August 6th, then you will be bringing to us this plan down the road.
Yes.
This three-to-five-year facility.
Yeah, so I'm, we're heavy into it, and I'm pretty close to reviewing it in detail with Dr. Van Wagner, so we can make adjustments and get that ready to go.
Within a couple of months, you think?
I would assume by October.
Okay, great.
Maybe sooner.
And then, and with the bond planning and time, timeline, that would be like showing us the sequence of, you know, central grade school first, and then other things.
Yep. How long we think it's going to take, what it'll look like, what comes first, what's next, what's at the same time.
Great.
What we might be able to package together.
We start filling out our sheet here.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
It would fill the sheet out.
So, yeah.
I noticed, I was gonna.
So you can read it, it's this big.
You can see we're getting pretty light, can't you?
Yeah. Only three upcoming projects. I'm like, what, where's the rest?
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're almost out of money, so it kind of slows down the purchasing. But yeah, it's, it's a lot of work. We're getting into the fine detail. So. More to come on that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's pretty good. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, we have a, just a general item for other items. If there are no other items, then I believe we will.
Just that last note, Christine, I wanted to ask, what is the remaining fund balance from our 2018 bond at this point? With or without the August expenditures?
The remaining funds available, 10 million.
10 million, okay.
And we would sell those at the same time in February.
Okay, okay. So the three things that are on here from technology that are TBD, are those expected to?
Those are already funded, and that's not the 10. 10 is left after all of that. Those are part of their annual allocations, and they manage those budgets.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But we are working on plans to pay tape for right away, that 10 million.
No surprise there.
Right. Which will be a part of the presentation.
We'll be spending a lot of money right away. That's all.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks for everyone's time today. We will adjourn. Our next meeting is on Thursday, August 29th at 8:15. Thank you.
Thank you.